Good evening, welcome to the Quinlan County Council meeting for Tuesday at October twenty-sixth, twenty-one. We start with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Collins, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest law of liberty and justice for all.
So at this point, we open the floor to public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to make a comment, please come up to the microphone and give us your name and your address.
My name is Frida Tote. I'm in Rockland, New York. Good evening. My name is Frida Tote. I live at eighteen Goodwin Avenue, and it is my pleasure to address the council again in objection to the proposed building by Chris Patton at the end of Goodwin and Union. Um, I have with me a letter signed by multiple residents of Goodwin and one resident of Parish Apartments. And we have seven points in objection that we need to. I'm going to read them to you, and I also have visual aids. A good deal of our objection, in fact, most of our objection stems from the fact that Goodwin Avenue is an exceptionally narrowed street. Not only is exceptionally narrow, it lacks what most city streets have, a strip of grass between the road and the sidewalk. This strip of grass provides safety from traffic and aids in snow removal. We lack that protection on Goodwin Avenue. It's an extremely narrow street. For this reason, traffic is quite a bit more dangerous than it would be on a typical street. Goodwin itself is exceptionally narrow. This term in picture of my daughter, there was a picture of my daughter, but it also shows how narrow the street is. There's a car going by, you see there's no strip of green, and you also see that Goodwin Avenue households don't have front yards. Some of them have side yards or backyards, but none of them has a front yard. And that means if you're a child on Goodwin Avenue, you are going to play in the street. That is not the ideal thing, but we can't all move. That's where our houses are, on a place with no front yards. When kids go out for the ice cream truck and traffic goes by, it's dangerous as it is. Mr. Patton's proposed unit has twenty households in it, twenty units in it. The increase in traffic, it's immeasurable. There are only fifteen houses on Goodwin, seventeen if you count the ones that go onto Bay and onto Glen. So that's more than double the households on the street that is this narrow with no front yards with over a dozen children. So I'm gonna pass this one around. I'm gonna pass this the other way because I'm an educator and that's how we do things. This is a Goodwin Avenue house. It is obviously over a hundred years old with a beautiful lemonade porch. Every house on Goodwin is over a hundred years old, even the ones that are multifamily, actually they're two-family. There, I believe on Goodwin, there's nothing more than two-family, not quite certain amount, but pretty certain. But even the ones that are two-family are visibly hundred-year-old buildings, and quite a few of them have beautiful porches and beautiful gardens. These are old, elegant buildings, and a twenty-room luxury apartment would not fit in the neighborhood. And I might add that one of the things Mr. Patton has said, again and again and again, is, "Oh, this is luxury apartments, this is gonna be different, this is gonna be great." We're a middle-class neighborhood, we really are. We don't need or want a luxury apartment. And here is my visual aid. As again you can see, no front yard, but quite a lovely old house. So here we have signatures from, I believe it was six households, one on Heritage Apartments who objects to the traffic as well. We object based on our lived experiences on this street and for the following reasons: aesthetic, Goodwin Avenue residences are one-hundred-year-old houses. Even the two-family houses are recognizably structured over a hundred years old, many with charming porches and gardens, and a three-story apartment building would not suit the area. Traffic flow on this street, Goodwin Avenue, as you can all see, is an uncommonly narrow street, which should not sustain any increase in traffic. Traffic flow in the area, and this is really, really important, all of Goodwin and half of Union are one-way in opposite directions. Union is one-way from Harlem to Glenn Street. Glenn Street is the main route through Luns Falls before the Northway was actually the main route between Canada and New York City. If you're increasing traffic onto Goodwin and to Union, that is a great deal of traffic coming from Glenn, and it's inevitable it would go down Goodwin. It's just too much traffic, especially with one-way streets going in opposite directions. There's no way this would not affect the neighborhood. I want to emphasize safety of children because we don't have the front yards. When children walk to school, if there's more than two children, because even the sidewalk is narrow, they have to walk, children have to walk to school going in the street. It is not avoidable. The nearest public playground is on Bridge Street. That means the kids have to cross Bay Street to get to the nearest public playground. The next nearest playground is Sanford Street School, which of course is closed during the daytime. Increased traffic on Goodwin therefore endangers children. Economics. Now take another look if you'd like at, you know, it happens to be my house, but it's a typical Goodwin house. The households on Goodwin show pride of ownership. One and two-bedroom apartments would not attract people who would have pride of ownership. With all that means in terms of purchases made to sustain a home, it would not attract people who would invest in our community long-term, and that's what Luns Falls really needs, people who are investing in the community. Light pollution. Light pollution wouldn't affect me so much because I'm on a different end of the street, but the proposed increased lighting would greatly decrease the quality of life for people on that end of the street. Safety in general. Right now there aren't even currently twenty households on Goodwin because there aren't twenty buildings on Goodwin. An increase of this magnitude, it cannot be good for the community. We live here. We are families, homeowners, gardeners, grandparents, small children, high school students. We're asking you not to destroy our neighborhood. Do not allow Chris Patton to build the campus of Goodwin and Union. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to address the council? Okay, I see out in the audience our new superintendent, that's Bill Norton. And Bill, I don't know if everybody's met you yet, but welcome aboard, and I know you're already hard at work in your bed of meetings, and thank you. I don't know if you wanted to say anything to the council.
Just wanted to show and say thank you, obviously, for coming aboard, and, no, no, everybody knows you. I've met a few of you. I grew up in Queensberry, graduated from Queensberry High School, went to two years at ACC, met my college, moved to Connecticut, and now I've come back. I'm very humbled and honored that I was able to secure this position, and I hope to serve citizens of Luns Falls as well. And just wanted to show my face and say hello to everyone. I know that we have our public notice for the budget on the weekend tonight.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
We'll go to committee reports in this room.
The personnel committee met with our CSEA erstwhile negotiating team earlier this evening, and we will not be meeting on the ninth of November because of a meeting conflict that the council had, so we will be meeting again on the tenth. We carry on. Progress is being made. We carry on.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. K, no report. Ms. Collins, no report.
The technology committee met last week. You'll see an agenda item tonight for some spending for cloud backup and some other technology spending. Basically, this is so the city can be up and running almost instantaneously if there were some events that could occur. Going to cloud backup is kind of the direction we want to move in, so that's what that's about. For the building and codes committee, we are looking at, we're working on some language in our code to address exterior lighting that shines straight at other people's houses as opposed to down, and we're still in the process of working on that, but that may show up on a council agenda if it gets through committee in the next couple meetings.
Great, thank you. Ms. Strang, you have none. Ms. Clark.
The special projects committee met after the last council meeting to meet with discussion on changing the taxi code. We are close. We are, I need to reach out to my colleagues in the first ward and the second ward and getting some dates to meet with various nonprofits that are willing to participate with us to help subsidize the taxicab fare increase. So I'll try to get some dates, and we can then work with all the nonprofits, senior citizens center, the Housing and Leadership Services, Salvation Army, I'm missing one, Open Doors. I was also recommended that we reach out to Head Start, which I will do, so to try to work out a plan. This change in the code doesn't work if we don't have a plan to help subsidize our most vulnerable people in this increase, so we need to get that done first before we move this forward to you guys on a public hearing, so stay tuned to that, Mayor. And also, councilman from the second ward, if you do remember, we did have a sustainability committee meeting?
Yes.
I know you've had a lot going on, so.
I, you want to give a report for me?
Sure, I'm happy to. We had met with a company that has a unique process of putting solar panels over landfills like ours that creates more coverage, so in turn creates more opportunities for us. It was really exciting what they had to say, and we're looking at, I don't know if we've got any letter from them, but we're looking at potentially trying to move forward because there's some things that they need to happen to do a full study on how much it's going to be generated, but it basically covers our whole landfill without doing harm to it, the solar panels, and whereas the old way, we got very little coverage because it has to be on the background. So it's really exciting, and the opportunities to generate that type of electricity really help us, A, attract businesses, or put it back into, you know, our city properties.
Almost double the electricity, right? And also the possibility of possibly sheep or bees on the.
Oh, I totally forgot about, we're excited about that.
They talked about planting pollinator plants, and then they make honey, and they call it sunny honey because of the solar panels, and they said it's actually cheaper to hire people to mow the, whatever they put in with sheep. So it's all just kind of brainstorming at this point, but it's kind of exciting.
It really, it really makes, you know, the synergy of what could happen there on a whole landfill is just really an incredible story, so we were all jazzed about it, so, you know, I like the alpactas, they had alpactas on one location, so.
So with solar panels and alpactas.
Running around on the landfill.
It's great.
It's really exciting stuff, Mayor, so I, you know, I mean, we're hoping that potentially we can work with them, but there's gotta be some things done before we get to really flush stuff out.
Great, well, I appreciate everything the sustainability committee's done, and thinking out of the box, it's always a good thing. With the voice hold, is there anything you'd like to pull for discussion? If not, number one is a resolution approving the minutes of the October twelfth, twenty-twenty-one meeting of the Luns Falls County Council. Two is a resolution approving a request for mayor handling school to close one side of the portion of Long Street on October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, between sixth and seventeenth, for the school's annual trip to treatment.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Under the roll call, are there any resolutions you would like to pull for internal discussion? Seeing done, number three is a resolution approving the court for permit as approved by Mayor Hall on September twenty eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Presidico one eighty-nine dash nineteen B subject to retroactive county council approval for Stewart Shaft's for one eighteen Broad Street to temporarily block off sidewalks in Hudson Avenue and Broad Street from September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one through October seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Four is a resolution approving the court for permit as approved by Mayor Hall on October eighth, twenty-twenty-one, Presidico's one eighty-nine dash ten B for R. L. Chase Doors, LLC twenty Marion Avenue, South Luns Falls Work for Associates of Luns Falls, two twenty-first Street, to block off the entrance of the Elm Street parking lot from Bun Street due to urgent repairs to the brickwork, with the understanding that the areas are corbeled and not at all for pedestrian access according to ADA regulations from October eleventh to the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Five is a resolution set in the public hearing, polls overwrought to amend the code of the city of Luns Falls to change zoning designation of two parcels at thirty-eighth Road Street, tax map ID number three oh nine point zero seven dash ten dash eight, and tax ID three oh nine point zero seven dash ten dash thirty-three, from R. one B single-family medium density residence to C. P. corporate pressure pursuant to an October fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Favorable opinion of the Luns Falls planning board for seven twenty-five, Tuesday, November ninth, twenty-twenty-one, in the county council chambers, and authorize the city code to make public notice their. Six is a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-two law of the one super fund budget raise, fees and charges in setting up public hearing at seven budget rates, fees and charges for seven twenty, Tuesday, November ninth, twenty-twenty-one, in the county council chambers, and authorize the city code to make public notice their. Seven is a resolution approving community development manual payments of nineteen thousand five hundred eleven dollars and ninety-six cents. Eight is a resolution authorizing payment of the one deferred loan approved by the project review created by the Greater Luns Falls Law and Corporation under the City Small Business Recovery Fund, SB RA, created to help small businesses in the city of Luns Falls prepare for, prevent and respond to COVID-19 with funding provided by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to an allocation of CBPG-CV and CBGG-CV three, funding enacted under the CARES Act approved since adopted by the county council. Nine is a resolution approving the polls, proposals by Hazy Company to complete an application for the Elm Street Green Infrastructure Project for a fee of six thousand dollars, and authorizing the man to enter into a contract with Hazy in a form approved by the city attorney. Ten is a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city, city board of the city, designated representative of Smith, Grant, and one application to E. O. C. and act in connection with submission of the application, including execution of all required certification requirements and to provide such additional information as may be required. Eleven is a resolution determining that the proposal Elm Street Green Infrastructure improvements are a type two action under SECCURE regulations and therefore applies to non-action subject to review under SECCURE. Twelve, the resolution authorizes the control to establish a capital project in the amount of one million two hundred thousand to complete the Elm Street Green Infrastructure Project, and further authorizing the city's bond council to refer formal bond resolutions pursuant to provisions of local finance law for the issuance of bonds to pay the cost of the Elm Street Green Infrastructure Project. Thirteen is a resolution authorizing issuance of two hundred seventy thousand dollars in bonds of the city of Luns Falls, Orange County, to pay costs in connection with the bonds for the overall abatement project in and set for city. Fourteen is a resolution authorizing the issuance of two hundred thirty thousand dollars in bonds of the city of Luns Falls, Orange County, to pay costs in connection with the Elm Street parking lot storm or the management project in and set for the city. Fifteen is a resolution authorizing issuance pursuant of section ninety of the local finance law of refinancing the bonds in the city of Luns Falls, Orange County, to be designated substantially public improvement, refunding several bonds and providing for other matters in relation there to an agreement of bonds to be refunded thereupon. Sixteen is a resolution authorizing the control to increase general fund revenue line A, zero zero nine 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 dash four zero wing nine, government aid other by thirty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and fourteen cents, and increase general fund express line A, one one six eight five dash twenty-third computer acquisition by thirty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars and fourteen cents, refunding received through American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. Seventeen is a resolution awarding the city of Luns Falls twenty-one dash zero eight rebate City Hall Roadhead Forest project to home improvement, south Luns Falls sold it for a bid amount of thirty thousand four hundred dollars. And eighteen is a resolution approving the.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Lard Reed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Campenell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Collins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Edneri?
Yes.
Hold business, Ms. Reed.
I have none.
Ms. Campenell.
I have none.
Welcome back, Ms. Campenell.
Thank you. Wanted to be back today, I think.
Ms. Collins.
Hold business, I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for their support of the special optics event, my last event with them, and it was a fantastic weekend. Really appreciate the showing of Luns Falls and the welcome, the warm welcome that Luns Falls made, had many people saying, who hadn't been here before, "This is like Maybach." You know, the park looked fantastic and so welcoming, and all the people were, and we got enough volunteers to help them out, and hopefully next year we'll be back and bigger, probably half the athletes they normally would have had, say about five hundred, but a normal year, probably even a thousand. So there is a three-year bid, and hopefully they'll be back next year.
Well, thank you, Mr. Collins, for the whole work you did on that, and it was an excellent endeavor. Ms. Collins.
I had my third word forum last week, and Councilman Clark and Collins were able to come. It was a small group, but it was really nice to hear from constituents, and it was also nice that a lot of the concerns that they expressed are things that we're actively working on, so I thought it was a good event, and I was happy to do it.
Great, thank you. You sure you heard? I have none. Ms. Clark.
I just wanted to remind everyone, we have our last election day breakfast together at Rachel's Spice Shop. I won't get emotional, I'll probably get emotional then, but it's, I talked to Rachel, she's got a table waiting for us, and she's looking forward to, she said she sees a mayor appointment, so she's looking forward to seeing him, and so it'll be, you know, one of our last times together, sharing the fellowship, so, thank you.
I'm gonna kill you. Hold business, Ms. Reed.
Oh, no, no.
Ms. Campenell.
Can't top that.
Ms. Collins.
I have none.
Ms. Collins.
Next week at the, we're gonna start working on the idea that we had to have a pickup by appointment, so if anyone has any thoughts or be scheduled or anything you want to send my way, I'm doing some research on that, so, that's it.
Ms. Shandry.
I just wanted to thank the mayor and Robin and everybody down Elm Street who's been working on our garbage situation. We've got a temporary, somewhat permanent solution, and hopefully it's, everyone's happy with it. It's better than what it is. I know there's gonna be a lot of changes still going on down there, so nothing's permanent at this point, but it's, we're in a, we're in a good direction right now. Thank you.
That's great, that's awesome.
Ms. Clark.
I have.
So I just wanted to mention that hockey's back. We had a great Saturday night, five thousand people, and there's a lot of enthusiasm for hockey again, you know, we spent, come on for two years, and now it's back, and that's a big, big revenue generator for the downtown area and for, obviously, for the citizens there, so try to support the best you can. And right now we're still in negotiations, so our budget hearings are getting pushed back a little bit, so we will put those out and let you know when we'll have those, so you should be watching the emails, I'll let you know when those show up. Is there anyone from the county council that would like to address the, from the audience that would like to address the council?
I think they do, I'm gonna talk to Robin, thank you, William Street. Yeah, thanks, thanks for the, all the work you guys have done on the dumpster thing. Ours should have been gone this week, but we'll get them gone, and then hopefully we can be a model for what the rest of the blocks can do around us.
You're great.
Saturday night with hockey and town was so fantastic, it was, you know, no place to park, but that's okay, because it was festive, people were happy, there was so much going on, it was wonderful. And from the collaborative, Sun Saturday is good to you, two to four. Our rain date is Sunday, I'm not sure who's gonna make that call, hopefully it's not me. I hate having to make that call because there is some rain forecast for Saturday. I think if it's light enough, we'll just continue on, but if it's heavy, we'll try to make a decision early, but it should be great, we got four thousand dollars worth of candy coming for the kids, so.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Right? Thank you.
Jeffrey, you'd like to address the council?
Robin, we four thousand dollars. Yeah.
You were busy. Just a quick update, you may be aware that there was a story in the Post-Raw of the weekend about an update for the DRI, so I just want to make sure everybody was sort of aware of where we were. That story came on the heels of a request by Chad Arnold soon before, asking to sort of get an update on the various projects, and so the mayor and I, I had some length, met with Chad just to sort of give him an update of the overall projects that we were doing for the DRI. Really what I was trying to sort of do was to reconcile what we had begun with, though it was many years ago, and sort of where we are, current update on those. About hacking through the meeting, I discovered, or learned I should say, that Chad was leaving the Post-Raw the following day, on Saturday, so he's since gone to now disconnected the Daily Gazette, so our probably scheduled hour meeting went about two and a half hours, and I went in some length of all the different current status, particularly Sausage, which of course is what he was interested in, both the Market Center project and the Market Square project. I mentioned this because it came to my attention afterwards that some of the council members may not have been totally up on some of the details that we were, that I was sort of sharing with him. I'm fairly sure that you all reasonably understand where we are with that project, but in the event that anybody had any sort of further details or need to sort of dig further in, don't hesitate to sort of come and talk to me about it. I'm more than happy to sort of, you know, go into the nitty-gritty with you, obviously the mayor and Councilwoman Reed are on the working group who spend a lot of time talking about this, and the sustainability members and so on, we talked a little bit about, but I know that some of these details, especially as we sort of look at how we're sort of breaking these down, our negotiations with Bonaccio regarding the various projects or properties they're looking at, the evolving iterations of the Market Center property, the now, the relocated parking structure over on the Elm Street lot, all these are sort of, a lot of literally in some cases moving parts. So if you do need any more information, please let me know. One of the reasons I mention this is because on the heels of that story, I've also been in contact in the last couple of days with Kathy Gede from the Chronicle and with Steve Thurston from the Downtown, or the foothills Mrs. Daley, so I have no idea what they're gonna write since I. So I have no idea what they're going to write since I tend to talk more than I can write. But if you give me some more details on that, just let me know and I'd be happy to sort of share that with you, say or not, blindside.
Do you have any like drawings of the Elm Street lot, somebody?
We, there's actually several versions, several previous versions of structures that we're looking at. Right now, we're doing a sort of engaging in sort of a phase one EPA environmental study to make sure that there's no, nothing hidden and there's the last time it was done. We do have some previous drawings, neither one of them is going to be, you know, going to adhere to fully. But I think there's a number of ideas we need to look at. One of the big issues we have right now is try to determine how many spaces we need, right? I mean, there's obviously the bank, you know, Glens Falls National is looking for spaces for, to some extent, dislocated spaces that they're losing the pavilion. I'd say they're losing to public parking space. But, and also of course, Bonaccio is now looking at a considerably larger potential residential project than they were originally. So we're trying to accommodate people as much as we can. One of the questions when you do that is, who pays for them? So, and how many can we fit, right? I mean, yeah, be careful not to sort of overbuild on that lot. You know, you want it to sort of fit in, you have to provide, you know, space for emergency vehicles and alleyways and things. But there's several previous drawings and I'd be happy to share them with you.
Yeah, definitely. I'm sure Robin will see them too.
Yes, I'm sure, probably quite a few people.
Well, remember, those are all previous drawings. And now, two were done like with actually negotiating with Bonaccio and settling all that. You can't really come up with a new drawing of what you need because you, it all depends on.
How many spots are you going to need?
What ends up being built, right? And where the quote, the most, it was actually pretty accurate information that was in the Post-Raw. But the whole, the whole thing about the budget being blown is ridiculous. Because, you know, when you're looking at a pavilion, right, and you're meeting with an architect and they say, what would you like? You go, I love this, right? And it's like with my own home and the kitchen renovation, right? They ask you, well, I want granite countertops and I want, you know, all these things. And then you go, oh, that's more money than you think, right? So there's no blowing of anything. It's just that now we need to make sure that we have the follow-up on plans that we can afford.
Yeah, and the headline is a bit disingenuous in the sense that, you know, it implies, at least the general public, that you've spent all money, you don't have any left and you still have to do a bunch of work. The fact of the matter is, we haven't spent much money at all, a very small portion, just in the preliminary designs. And where we are now is the point of which we say, well, what can we afford? So that's what we're sort of saying.
Well, and I also too, I mean, the fact about the parking garage, you know, moving, that's not a new concept. That's been out there for a long time.
Decades and decades.
Yeah, right. So I think from the standpoint that you look at what the immediate needs are and then you look at what future needs are, how far out are you going to build out South Street based on this renovation? What's the other side going to look like and so on and so forth? I mean, can we start taking over additional park, you know, surface parking, you know, to add more buildings to create, you know, more of a tax base? Because now you've centralized the parking and stuff like that. So, I mean, we're only four square miles, so we got to look at how are we going to best utilize our surface parking to help try to generate, to show property tax revenue, to try to balance our books to continue to do the services we need to provide to the citizens that demand our public safety and things like that, our recreation department stuff. So it's a balancing act. And I think when we, you know, look at the parking, we've got a plan for the future with that, not just the immediate needs, so.
And it should be noted that this was all, these most recent revelations, if you will, were all done on the heels of our meeting with Empire State Development, right? Because we really didn't want to move forward with anything until we were sure that they were comfortable with the direction we're going. One of the things we discovered was that, you know, they're not all that thrilled. Empire State Development isn't really in the business, if you will, of supporting parking garages. They do it as a support structure for other development. So they were more than happy to see that we were actually looking to move the earlier location where we can now put additional residential units, which are in great demand right now, and build the structure in an area that was a parking area, was going to remain a parking area, and now is going to be all.
I don't mind parking.
Well, we all need it, unfortunately, for better or worse. So, yeah, it's good for downtown businesses, I guess.
Yes.
I think it's also important for people to understand that the, it's not that we were given ten million dollars and it's sitting here, right? We have to do this work and then eventually get reimbursed. So I think budget loan kind of implies that money was spent, which it wasn't.
Yeah, so, so talk a little bit about the other projects that, you know, as we talked about, with the DRI, I was supposed to, you know, have more investment in there downtown. Talk about some of the, you know, dollar figures that we put together over the last two years.
What? I didn't bring, you talked about the.
No, I was about to compare that.
The private investment that was done?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you're probably all familiar, of course, with the Glens Falls National project, that's going to be about fifteen million, right? Now, when we look at the original Bonaccio project that was done, and you look at a building like Chuck Tom's, Associates, a building that's being renovated, you look at the.
Has he done with that yet?
No, he's not really done with that, but that's moving along. You know, you look at Christie Alexander, right, and the Worksmark property, the number of properties that are downtown. I think we estimated somewhere in the vicinity of about sixty million dollars that may have been invested in the last five to six years. So, and all this is on the heels of the DRI announcement, but prior to the sort of the cornerstone projects having been done. So, you know, and I have to tell you, I mean, I have, I won't say banging down the door, but certainly knocking on the door. Developers almost every week are contacting me about looking for properties to renovate, which is a wonderful thing when we look at downtown businesses. People, many people on South Street, quite frankly, are looking to sort of get in front of the lane, if you will. Just talked to a fellow just this afternoon, in fact. And you probably saw that there was the purchase for Dizzy Chicken. There's a little bakery that's trying to go in down with South Street too. So there's all sorts of investments that's going on downtown that is really what the DRI was designed to do, which was to catalyze private investment. And as Councilwoman Palmer just mentioned, you know, we haven't even gotten this done yet. So, I mean, I think that says a lot. And there's obviously a lot of circumstances that have done that that are not strictly DRI related. You know, COVID and relocations and remote work and all the different things we could do. But I think, you know, it's hard to argue that we're not moving in a really, really good direction right now.
Okay, could you knock on that table, please?
Could you what?
Knock on the wood, knock on the wood.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the council that, from the audience who'd like to address the council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second.
On Baron.
Aye.